One, I'll call the City Council to order at eight o'clock on Monday, July 22nd, 2024. The meeting is being recorded. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have thirty-seven items on our evening's agenda. I will ask the city clerk to please read Agenda Item Number One.
Minutes of the City Council Meeting, June 17th, 2024.
Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to accept and place on file the minutes.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the minutes. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none of those in favor, opposed, the minutes are filed, eleven zero. Agenda item number two.
Now is the time for the public hearing on the application for wireless special permit from Kristen Ladue on behalf of Dish Wireless to install three wireless antennas and related equipment on the rooftop of 157 Union Street, Order Number 24-109195.
Okay, this public hearing we've taken up in four stages. First, the public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant. Second, questions from the public. Third, public speaking in opposition. And finally, four, questions from the City Council. So we'll open, we'll open the public hearing with the public speaking in favor. Counselor Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please note that I am being recused from this agenda item.
Let the record reflect that Counselor Roby will not be participating in Agenda Item Number Two. So with that, the applicant wants to come on up and present the Dish Wireless Special Permit Application to the Council. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon. My name's Robin Latour. I'll be representing Kristen Ladue. I work for a network building consultant who's doing the work to represent Dish Wireless. So the proposal is at 157 Union Street in Marlborough, Mass. It would be on top of the rooftop. Dish's intention is to put a new telecommunications site up there, so that would include three panel antennas on three separate ballast mounts. It's at, and the equipment platform is already existing because Dish will be taking over a carrier that left that building and just taking it over from there. So, a standard, you know, with conduits, ballast mounts, and antennas, so nothing more specific than that.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Are there any questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Members of the public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the City Councilors? Questions from the City Councilors? No questions from the City Councilors? Questions from the City Councilors? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing and the entire public hearing, and this item is in public service. Agenda item number three.
Now is the time for the public hearing on the application for wireless special permit from Robin Latour on behalf of Dish Wireless to install three wireless antenna and related equipment on the rooftop at 450 Boston Post Road East, Order Number 24-109210.
Again, this public hearing we've taken up in the same four stages. First, with the public speaking in favor. Second, questions from the public. Third, public speaking in opposition. And fourth, questions from the City Council. So I'll open the first part of the public hearing with the public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant. Again, name and address for the record, please.
Robin Latour, Address 6 Upton Drive, Chingbro, Mass. Representing Dish Wireless, work for network building and consulting. So the next special permit application would be for 450 Boston Post Road. Same installation on the rooftop, three panel antennas on three ballast mounts. They will be putting a five-by-seven platform installation on the roof. There is another carrier, existing already on the roof, so it's not, nothing new out of zoning portion of that.
Thank you, Robin. Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any members of the public speaking in favor? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Any questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Any questions from the City Councilors? Counselor Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Latour, I just want to point out in the letter in our packet that we have that's dated June 12th, that's addressed to Mr. Tway, the Building Commissioner. I note that it says the site's an existing wireless communication in the city of Woburn.
Yep, I submitted a...
And that the site is the steeple of a church.
Yeah, that was a, I was, it was put in wrong. I submitted, I was dropping off a bunch of packages that day, so that was, I resubmitted the new letter to Steve after we noticed that that was for Woburn, so.
Okay.
That letter was just stating the 6409 law for wireless, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Roby. Any other questions from the City Councilors? Questions from the City Councilors? Any questions from the City Councilors? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing and the entire public hearing, and this is in public service.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Agenda item number four.
Communication from Councilors Ossing and Navin regarding municipal aggregation, June 2024, update.
Counselor Navin.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a quarterly letter, provides a little bit of information, just a couple of highlights. Marlborough residential electricity users participating in the aggregation program have saved over $805,000 in the first quarter of 2024. This is the first quarter of the city's new contract with First Point Power, which began in February and will run through November of 2025. Participants in the program were notified in December that the city of Marlborough has entered into a new contract with a new energy supplier, which is First Point Power. This new rate is 14 cents per kilowatt hour, which is still lower than the National Grid basic service winter rate of 18 cents, which runs until July, as well as the summer rate of 16 cents, which will begin next month and run through January of 2025. Importantly, this contract provides 100% renewable energy, and our rate is even more cost-effective when it's compared to National Grid's green options. It's projected that this contract will save Marlborough residential electricity users participating in the program approximately $2.6 million in calendar year 2024. The prior aggregation contract with Inspire, which ended in January, saved Marlborough residential electricity users who participated over $19.8 million since it began in November of 2019. And overall, since this municipal aggregation program has started, all users have saved over $34 million. So we continue to save money on behalf of the residents of the city who participate. This continues to do good, and hopefully will continue to do so as the program and the marketplace evolve. So with that, I move to accept and place on file.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the communication. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none of those in favor? Opposed, the communication is filed, eleven zero. Agenda item number five.
Communication from the mayor regarding grant acceptance in the amount of $425,000 from the Department of Transportation awarded to the Marlborough Economic Development Corporation and the city of Marlborough to be used to continue funding of the Marlborough Community Commuter Shuttle.
Counselor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve the grant, please.
Motion made and seconded to approve the grant. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Are those in favor? Opposed, the grant is approved, eleven zero. Agenda item number six.
Communication from the mayor regarding grant acceptance in the amount of $237,319 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts awarded to the IT department to be used to expand the current fiber lines throughout the city.
Counselor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve the grant, please.
Motion made and seconded to approve the grant. Any discussion on the motion? Counselor Doucette.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I would like to give a congratulations to Mr. Gibbs for basically getting $237,000 plus for grant money and only 12,000 of us out of pocket, so good job, Mr. Gibbs. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Doucette. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none on the motion to approve the grant. All those in favor? Opposed, the grant is approved, eleven zero. Agenda item number seven.
Communication from the mayor regarding grant acceptance, the amount of $76,570 from the US Department of Energy awarded to the Conservation Department to be used to upgrade energy control systems in various municipal buildings.
Counselor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve the grant, please.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the grant. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none of those in favor? Opposed, the grant is approved, eleven zero. Agenda item number eight.
Communication from the mayor regarding grant acceptance in the amount of $25,000 from the Mass Council on Aging awarded to the Senior Center to be used to enhance our current senior transportation program.
Counselor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve the grant, please.
Motion made and seconded to approve the grant. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Are those in favor? Opposed, grant is approved, eleven zero. Agenda item number nine.
Communication from the mayor regarding grant acceptance, the amount of $3,400 from the Mass Council on Aging awarded to the Senior Center to be used to develop a marketing informational packet for services available to seniors.
Counselor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve the grant, please.
Motion made and seconded to approve the grant. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Are those in favor? Opposed, the grant is approved, eleven zero. Agenda item number ten.
Communication from the mayor regarding gift acceptance in the amount of $400 from the Colonial Garden Club awarded to the Conservation Department to be used to expand the existing pollinator gardens and efforts throughout the city.
Counselor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve the grant, and thank you to the Colonial Garden Club for their generous gift. Thank you.
Motion made and seconded to approve the Colonial Garden Club gift, which is very generous. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Are those in favor? Opposed, the gift is approved, eleven zero. Agenda item number eleven.
Communication from the mayor regarding proposed job description pursuant to Chapter 125 Personnel, Section 5, preparation of classification descriptions relative to the position of kitchen coordinator for the Senior Center.
Counselor Navin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to accept and place on file.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none of those in favor? Opposed, the job description is filed, eleven zero. Agenda item number twelve.
Communication from the mayor regarding proposed drainage easement acceptance for a project on Cullen Ain Drive.
Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to thank the property owner and our city engineer, Tom, for communicating with us on this and granting the easement, and I would like to move to approve.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the drainage easement. Any discussion on the motion? Counselor Oram.
Mr. President, I'm going to abstain. I could be on the butter. I'm within 300 feet, so I'm going to abstain from the vote, just to be on the safe side.
We'll let the record reflect that Counselor Oram is abstaining from participating in Agenda Item Number Twelve. Any further discussion on the item? Seeing none. Are those in favor? Opposed, the drainage easement is approved, ten zero with one abstention. Agenda item thirteen.
Communication from the mayor regarding proposed eminent domain order of taking for properties related to the construction project on Weed Street.
Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to thank our engineer, Tom DePersio, again, and the property owners for working on this and helping create a more vibrant downtown, and move to approve, please.
Motion made and seconded to approve the easement on Weed Street. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none of those in favor? Opposed, it is approved, eleven zero. Thank you, Tom. Agenda item number fourteen.
Communication from the mayor regarding reappointment of Judith Kane to the Council on Aging Board for a four-year term to expire May 1st, 2028.
Counselor Navin.
Thank you, Mr. President. As the mayor's letter notes, this is a reappointment, and Mrs. Kane has served eight years already on the board, along with countless other years of service to our community. On behalf of Mrs. Kane and her family, I don't see the need to bring her in for a personnel committee meeting, so I would like to approve that tonight, so move to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve the appointment, reappointment. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Are those in favor? Opposed, the reappointment is approved, eleven zero. Agenda item number fifteen.
Communication from the mayor regarding veto of City Council Order 24-109156A, proposed amendments to Chapter 125 Personnel to delete Sections 10 and C and Section 18A4 relative to the mayor's authority to grant steps and to grant additional vacation time to new employees.
Counselor Navin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to override the mayor's veto.
Motion's made and seconded to override the mayor's veto. Any discussion on the motion? Counselor Doucette.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I was against this to begin with, so I'm going to be, would be the appropriate vote to reject the veto.
You would not be supporting the veto.
Not to be.
An affirmative vote is to approve the override. A negative vote is to not approve the override.
Thank you for the clarification, sir.
You're welcome. Any further discussion? I could ask Counselor Roby to take the chair, please.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Madam President.
Counselor Ossing.
Thank you, Madam President. Counselors, if you, I'm assuming everyone's read the letter, so I guess I want to give my thoughts on the letter and then the follow-up email from the mayor. So this is one of the biggest pieces, in my opinion, of fiction and misleading information that I've seen out of the mayor's office in my 25 years on the council. So let me provide you the examples as to why I've come to that conclusion. Now, I'm quoting from the mayor's letter. "The primary objection is to ensure Marlborough maintains short, long-term competitiveness in recruiting and retaining personnel. The ordinance has been in place since 1993, and there's been no, I repeat, no impact or evidence of that impacting our ability to hire. None." All right? "Secondly, the ordinance has nothing to do with retaining personnel. Nothing. The information is wrong." Next item, "The ordinance will severely restrict the city's hiring authority," meaning the mayor, "from attracting, recruiting, and retaining personnel." Again, there's no evidence of the current ordinance restricting the hiring process. None. The mayor has used it since he's been in here to increase the salary and vacation of his friends, the chief of staff, the administrative aide, the personnel director, none of which were time-critical or extraordinary circumstances. And as a reminder, all salaries are public information. There's no secrets here. It's transparent government, folks. And again, the ordinance has nothing to do with retaining personnel. The Human Resource Survey that was conducted, forty-seven municipalities, forty-two are towns. What's Marlborough? A city. Okay? So this is misleading information. These towns operate completely different than cities. Of the five cities that were polled or responded to the survey, two of them do not allow the mayor to change the salary. So the data that was presented does not support the mayor's conclusion, and again, is misleading. The next item, "Candidates will be required to go in front of the City Council prior to hiring in order to bargain for a higher step." This is just not true. That has never, ever happened in my 25 years on the council. The mayor wants to increase something, they come and ask us, and we talk with the, about with the mayor. We don't put someone in front of them to talk about their salary. We just don't do that. All right? The mayor requests a change, just like it's done since the ordinance has been in place in 1993. You want to ask for more money? Come down and let us know. Perfectly fine. And again, due to the public nature of the process, it would be impossible to retain the confidentiality that is needed for the hiring process. So again, it's just not true. All salaries are public information. The budget's online. The salary ordinances are online. You can get all that, well, that's actually not true, that you got to go to the city, but it says, go see the city clerk, and he can give you all the salary ordinances of everybody, including the city councils that you want to. Regarding the Collins Center, the city is undergoing a salary review that councils have been supportive of. Okay, spoiler alert, the salary review is not going to show any positions are overfunded. All right? It's just not going to happen. So we know it's going to come down at the end of this year when the salary goes up. All those salaries are going to go up. I anticipate the mayor will be submitting those salary ordinances when the, and they're all going to be increases, and then the mayor's going to even have more authority to increase the position. And finally, on the letter, "Once word gets out that the effects of this ordinance, it will signal to them that Marlborough is a place to pass over." This is pure nonsense by the mayor. If he wrote this, he should be ashamed. That's purely speculation. You cannot make that statement, and hopefully, when you read that letter, you came to that exact same conclusion. There's absolutely no evidence of this, and it's just a misleading statement. So regarding the mayor's email today, Marlborough is a city and not a town. The forty-two towns that he references in his email are not applicable. They're towns. Towns operate differently than cities do. We're a city. We can operate quickly if we need to. And I will tell you, we have not needed to in my 25 years on the council. Again, only five cities, and two of those didn't have the, didn't allow the salary to be changed, just like we have here. If it was discussed at a mayor's meeting, the mayor mentions he discussed at his mayor's meeting with other mayors, yet only five of the fifty-two cities responded? So again, this is the mayor's opinion, that he thinks all the other cities have the same right to waive steps. Again, not factually correct. Regarding negotiations need to happen quickly, is again a misleading statement to the council. All salaries are public information. It does not to be very, it isn't transparent from the mayor to make it sound like you can't tell anybody what the salaries are. It is. It's public information. This is, salaries in the city are public. There's no restriction on the impact of the ability to hire in a competitive market, the mayor states in his email. Again, pure speculation and misleading the council. And finally, the mayor says it's not about saving money. Again, I don't recall in any of the personnel meetings that this was intent to save any money. It's just not true. All right? We will evaluate anything that comes before us in what we normally do, a fair and open process. So in conclusion, the council should unanimously support the override of the mayor's veto. The mayor's letter and email contain misleading information. The City Council did what was appropriate, which was to change the ordinance on June 3rd, 2024. The mayor has demonstrated that he has shown favoritism in increasing the salary by adding vacation to his friends that he's hired. Once the council pointed out this information, the next hire, our city collector, it was started the first step with a proper vacation. So I ask the councilors to support the motion to override the mayor's veto. Thank you, Madam President.
Any further discussion on the motion to override the mayor's veto? Seeing none. All in favor of overriding the mayor's veto? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, president makes eight. Opposed? One, two, three. The ordinance, or the override is passed, veto override is passed by a vote of eight to three. The ordinance change is now in effect. Agenda item sixteen.
Communication from City Solicitor Jason Grossfield regarding information on dismissal relative to the matter of JW Capital Partners LLC and Marlborough TOTG LLC versus the city of Marlborough.
Excuse me, Marlborough City Council.
Counselor Pressiata.
Yeah, I need to recuse myself. I'm a director of butter. Thank you.
Let the record reflect that Counselor Pressiata will be recusing himself. Counselor Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to accept and place on file the communication, and thank the solicitor for the work that he did, and for the proponent, opponent for dismissing.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the communication from the solicitor. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Are those in favor? Opposed, the communication is filed by a vote of ten to zero to one, one abstention. Agenda item seventeen.
Communication from City Solicitor Jason Grossfield regarding proposed zoning amendment to Chapter 650 zoning to create the Lazott Drive Overlay District in proper legal form, Order Number 24-109121.
Counselor Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move this to reports of committees.
Motion made and seconded to remove this item to reports of committee. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Are those in favor? Opposed, this is going to reports of committee, eleven zero. Agenda item eighteen.
Communication from City Solicitor Jason Grossfield regarding proposed regulatory agreement and declaration of restrictive covenants for rental project pursuant to special permit condition number six for Alta French Hill at Lincoln and Mechanic Streets.
Counselor Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. This document is similar to ones that we have approved in the past. It just codifies the agreement in Alta for the affordable units. Move to accept, move to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Are those in favor? Opposed, it is approved, eleven zero. Agenda item nineteen.
Communication from City Solicitor Jason Grossfield regarding proposed zoning ordinance amendment to Chapter 650 zoning to add a new section, the multifamily MBTA housing overlay district relative to multifamily zoning requirements for MBTA communities, Order Number 23-108909A.
Counselor Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Marlborough is taking up the MBTA housing overlay district. It has, was sent to the council under former mayor Vigent. It's sort of laid on the table. We worked through some issues. It got sent to get some initial approval by the new EOH, whatever those abbreviations are. They sent back some suggested amendments, so we need to hold a public hearing on this. It needs to get referred to Urban Affairs and the Planning Board. I move to have a public hearing for the City Council on August 19th, and I would urge whoever can to publicize the fact, considering we've had other ordinance issues from the public saying they don't know about it. Because they don't have to get notice, this does impact the whole city, so anybody who can help us, I think Counselor, our President Ossing is going to see if it can go on the city website. It would be on the city website anyway, but newspapers, whoever can make sure that the public is aware that this is something the city's mandated to do, and hopefully, the council will agree with the suggested zoning so that we meet our requirements. So I think I stated, public hearing August 19th, refer to Urban Affairs and the Planning Board.
Motion made and seconded to refer to Urban Affairs, the Planning Board, set a public hearing for August 19th, and to advertise. Any discussion on the motion? Counselor Doucette.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. President, first, I'd like to thank Solicitor Grossfield for work that was put, this was put in. It is in outstanding shape. It is clear and concise. I was impressed with everything. One question is, should the Lazott Drive be included in this? And I'm not sure if we want to advertise until we have that answer formalized. I'm serious, because we're just going through...
We can take that up in the Urban Affairs meeting.
Then we're going to have to re-advertise, right?
No, not, I don't believe so, but we'll, yeah, if it's to subtly change, but again, not, not to bore everybody with the details, but we've set up the zone that's been approved by the states. It's enough to, the issue isn't to build more of them, it's to contain it and keep our hands around.
Right. No, I understand, but the goals, you know, Lazott would fit in this if it wasn't being passed tonight, because I'd expect this to be included.
Well, again, so the other reason why it can't be Lazott Drive, it has to be at least a five-acre parcel, and this is not, Lazott Drive is not, so that, again, I'm thinking quickly here, but I think that would...
I hope you're right on that one, because I'll keep, anyway, we'll see.
Thank you, Counselor Doucette. Counselor Landers.
Now, we have, what, until December 31st to have this completed?
Yes, if we have the public hearing on August 19th, that'll start the 90-day clock, so the City Council will have to act by November 19th. The plant will need input from the Planning Board, which I would assume the Planning Board would have their public hearing in early September, so we get their information back end of September, early October, so then the Urban Affairs Chair will have the meeting sometime in October, and we'll work our way through the process.
So our time is good.
Yeah, no, we, we're close, but...
Pretty, pretty good.
Okay. Anyone else? So on the motion to refer to Urban Affairs, the Planning Board set a public hearing for August 19th and advertise. All those in favor? Opposed, it is approved, going to Urban Planning Board, public hearing eight nineteen and advertise, votes eleven zero. Agenda item number twenty.
Communication from Assistant City Solicitor Jeremy McManus regarding proposed zoning ordinance amendment to Chapter 650 zoning relative to updating provisions regarding medical and adult use, medical and adult-use marijuana in proper legal form, Order Number 24-109136.
Counselor Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move this to Agenda Item Number Thirty-seven.
Motion made and seconded to move this item down to Agenda Item Number Thirty-seven. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Are those in favor? Opposed, the item's going to Agenda Item Number Thirty-seven. The vote's eleven zero. Agenda item twenty-one.
Communication from the Planning Board regarding favorable recommendation of the proposed zoning ordinance amendment to Chapter 650 zoning to add a new section to create the Lazott Drive Overlay District, Order Number 24-109121A.
Counselor Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to accept and place on file the communication.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the Planning Board communication. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Are those in favor? Opposed, communication is filed, eleven zero. Agenda item twenty-two.
Communication from the Planning Board regarding favorable recommendation of the proposed zoning ordinance amendment to Chapter 650 zoning to add a new section to create the Donald Lynch Boulevard District, Order Number 24-109147A.
Counselor Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to accept and place on file the communication from the Planning Board.
Motion's made and seconded to accept and place on file the Planning Board communication. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Are those in favor? Opposed, communication is filed, eleven zero. Agenda item twenty-three.
Cation of Mass Electric in Verizon, New England to relocate one joint pole on Devon Street, beginning at a point approximately eight feet west of the center line of the intersection of Pole Four, moving Pole Number Four Devon, on Devon Street, to the west eight feet to move away from a cliff. Petition to Mass Electric in Verizon, New England to relocate one joint pole on Devon Street, beginning at a point approximately eight feet west of the center line of the intersection of Pole Four, moving Pole Number Four Devon, on Devon Street to the west eight feet to move away from a cliff.
Counsel Landers.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, please refer to Public Service Committee and a motion to schedule a public hearing, uh, on August nineteenth.
Can I ask that you change that to just schedule the public hearing? We'll let the-
Yeah, okay.
We'll let the, uh, city engineer give us the information, that'll determine if we need a public hearing.
Okay.
I mean, uh, to send it to Public Service.
Motion made in second to set the public hearing for August nineteenth. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? We'll have a public hearing on August nineteenth. Vote eleven zero. Agenda item twenty-four.
Petition to Mass Electric to install underground facilities and cable from Pole Twenty-Four and Pole One across the street on Link Shore Drive.
Counsel Landers.
Again, thank you, Mr. President. Motion to schedule a public hearing on August nineteenth.
Motion's made in second to set a public hearing for August nineteenth. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Public hearing will be August nineteenth. Vote eleven zero. Agenda item twenty-five.
Petition to Mass Electric in Verizon, New England to install one joint owned pole at two fifteen Cimarrano Drive, beginning at a point approximately three hundred and seventy-eight feet south of the center line in the intersection of Forest Street, installing forty-five feet of C one dot two midspan between Poles Twenty and Twenty-One, install a feeder monitor on the midspan.
Counsel Landers.
Again, thank you, Mr. President. Motion to schedule a public hearing on August nineteenth.
Motion's made in second to set a public hearing for August nineteenth. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? We'll set a public hearing for August nineteenth. Votes eleven zero. Agenda item twenty-six.
Appli-, excuse me, application for a special permit from Attorney Pamela Brown on behalf of Ambidextrous Ventures LLC for a proposed new pickleball facility with six indoor courts, a small practice court, pro shop, restroom facilities, along with an outdoor court, picnic area, and seventy-six parking spaces to be constructed at one nineteen Airport Boulevard, Unit Eleven.
Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to refer this to Urban Affairs, to set a public hearing for August nineteenth and to advertise.
Motion made in second to refer to Urban Affairs, we'll set a public hearing for August nineteenth and we'll advertise. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? It's going to Urban with a public hearing on August nineteenth and to be advertised. The vote is eleven zero. Agenda item twenty-seven.
Communication from Sudbury Companies of Minnetonka Militia regarding, regarding a request for temporary sign placement at the corner of Route Twenty and Hager Road from Saturday, September twenty-first, twenty twenty-four to Sunday, September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, for the twenty twenty-four Colonial Fair and muster at Waiside.
Counsel Navin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, always a good event. Um, want to thank the companies, um, for coming in through the regular process. I'd like to highlight for the public that this year's fair and muster will be Saturday, September twenty-eighth. Um, and with that, move to approve the temporary request, uh, the request for temporary sign, excuse me.
Motion made in second to approve the temporary sign request. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? The temporary sign request, request is approved, eleven zero. Agenda item number twenty-eight.
Communication from Central Mass Mosquito Control Project regarding personnel being in the community responding to residents' concerns about mosquitoes on various dates in July.
Counsel Oram.
Thank you for recognizing me, Mr. President. Um, Central Mass Mosquito will be taking requests their spring on, it looks like Wednesdays, so, um, for this month, and it could change next. And I know our trusty city clerk will have this information posted on the city website. Thank you, Mr. President.
For motion to accept.
Motion to accept and place on file.
Motion made in second to accept and place on file the communication. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Communication is filed, eleven zero. Agenda item number twenty-nine.
Minutes of boards, commissions, and committees.
Counsel Ducey.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Motion to accept and place on file the minutes of the boards, commissions, and committees.
Motion's made in second to accept and place on file all the minutes. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Minutes are filed, eleven zero. Agenda item number thirty. Claims. Counsel Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to send claims to Legal Department, please.
Motion made in second to send the claims to the Legal Department. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Claims are going to Legal, eleven zero. Reports of committees. I think I will start with Counsel Roby for Urban Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Urban Affairs Committee met on Monday, June twenty-fourth. At seven o'clock, we had two items on our agenda. The first one was order number twenty-four one hundred nine one two one, a proposed zoning amendment to the code, chapter six fifty zoning, to create the Lazat Drive Overlay District. Present for this were Attorney Fock and George Bannon, the Ferris Development Assistant General Counsel. Uh, the chair opened the meeting stating she would take up the orders in reverse. She read the letter from the Planning Board with its favorable recommendation, reasons, and suggestions, stating that several of the suggestions are more appropriate during a special permit discussion if the overlay is approved. Attorney Fock had been retained by the petitioner and sent a red line draft, which the chair read through. In the purpose and objectives, it mentions multifamily condominiums. The chair suggested we include language limiting the number of non-owner occupied units, and the chair stated she had discussed the option of adding in the term owner occupied. It was felt that having this discussed during the special permit would be better. The other item the Planning Board recommended was to prohibit contractor yards. The stairs, chair stated she discussed this with the solicitor, and he suggested adding in a new E prohibited uses where he would refer, refine the language. The petitioner and Attorney Fock are concerned that if the overlay is not used as a means of developing the parcel, that not allowing contractor yards could be an issue. Attorney Fock will work with the solicitor to create the language that covers their concerns. Counsel Ducey moved to amend the draft to include the prohibition of contractor yards. It was seconded and carried five to zero. Under parking regulations, Counsel Ducey moved to amend the one space per unit to one and a half spaces. It was seconded and the vote carried. There was discussion on the ten percent variation mentioned in the modifications and the site plan and its impact on the number of multifamily dwellings. It was pointed out that the number will be part of the code for this overlay and minor modifications can't affect it. Counsel Ducey moved to approve the draft proposed overlay district zoning amendment as further amended. The motion was seconded and carried at tonight's meeting. We do have the letter from the solicitor. It is in proper form. I will ask for a suspension so that this can be voted on this evening. Uh, the second item that we took up was order number twenty-four one hundred nine one four seven, proposed zoning amendment to chapter six fifty zoning to create the Donald Lynch Boulevard District. The chair read the letter from the Planning Board with its favorable recommendation, reasons, and suggestions. She then read through the language of the zoning amendment incorporating suggestions from James Ward, representing Nutter, McLennan, and Fish LLP, the receiver of Solomon Pond Mall. It was stated during the read-through that in six fifty thirty-nine A, section B, that the word overlay should be deleted. I have listed all of the changes. I'm not going to read through the eight of them. Everybody has a copy of this, and I don't think that we need to spend time for me going over them again. Counsel Navin moved to recommend approval of the proposed change to zoning as amended to create the Donald Lynch Boulevard District. It was seconded and carried five to zero. Uh, the chair will report this out tonight, which I'm doing, and ask for suspension to refer it to the legal. It is in proper form for the August nineteenth council meeting. The meeting adjourned at nine thirty-eight.
Okay, so the Urban Affairs Chair has asked for two suspensions. We'll take the Lazat Drive overlay first, so you want a suspension of the rules?
Suspend to approve?
Uh, motion to, motion to suspend the rules to, well, motion to suspend the rules. Any discussion is on the suspension for Lazat Drive? All in favor? Opposed? The suspension is approved. Madam Chair.
Um, so I guess I need to move to accept and place on file the communication from the solicitor and then move to recommend approval of the overlay district zoning for Lazat Drive.
Motion made in second to accept and place on file the communication from the solicitor on Lazat Drive. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed? Solicitor's communication is filed. Madam Chair.
Uh, move to approve the draft proposed overlay district zoning amendment.
Motion made in second to approve the ordinance. Since this is an ordinance change, it must pass the four stages. Before this, is there any discussion on the ordinance change? Seeing none, all those in favor suspending the first reading and approving the second reading? All those in favor? Opposed? That carries eleven zero. All those in favor of the passage to be enrolled? All those in favor? Opposed? That carries eleven zero. All those in favor of the passage to be ordained? All those in favor? Opposed? That carries eleven zero. Is there any objection to passage in one evening? Seeing none, the zoning change is approved, eleven zero. The second, you have a second suspension, Madam Chair?
Uh, yes, to suspend, to refer this to the solicitor to be in proper form for the August meeting.
Motion made in second to suspend the rules. All those in favor of the suspension? Opposed? Suspension carries eleven zero. Madam Chair.
Uh, move to refer to the solicitor, the Donald Lynch Boulevard zoning to be in proper form for the August meeting.
Motion made in second to send the Donald Lynch Boulevard District zoning change to the solicitor put in proper format for our August nineteenth meeting. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? It's going to the solicitor by a vote of eleven zero to be put in proper form. Thank you, Madam Chair. Counsel Irish, Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Finance Committee met on July eighth, twenty twenty-four. The meeting convened at seven PM. Uh, we had multiple, multiple items on the agenda that evening, starting with order number twenty-four dash one hundred nine two four, two zero four. Uh, communication from Mayor Dumas with the capital bond request for FY twenty-four from the year's capital improvement plan totaling ten million, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Uh, the entirety of this year's borrowing is to support facilities, uh, utility, and street projects by the Department of Public Works. Um, next up was order number twenty-four dash one hundred nine two four zero four A. That the sum of six million dollars be and hereby appropriated for street infrastructure, construction, reconstruction, and rehabilitation on a motion by Counsel Ficillo, seconded by the chair. The committee voted to recommend approval of the bond, and this will be under suspension this evening. Uh, the vote carried four to zero. Next up was order number twenty-four dash one hundred nine two zero four B. Uh, that the sum of five hundred thousand dollars be and hereby appropriated for landfill, uh, post-closure development. Uh, on a motion by Counsel Vidal, seconded by the chair, uh, the committee voted to recommend approval of the bond under suspension of the rules. Vote carried four to zero. Uh, next up was order number twenty-four dash one hundred nine two zero four C. Uh, that the sum of one million dollars be and hereby appropriated for the construction, reconstruction, and/or improvement of municipal pools, splash pads, and recreational facilities. Uh, Mayor Dumas will contact Ward Three Counsel Presciato to discuss the replacement of the, of the pool with the splash pad at Ward Park. Uh, on a motion by Counsel Oram, seconded by the chair, the committee voted to recommend approval of the bond under suspension of the rules. Uh, vote carried four to zero. Next up was order number twenty-four dash one hundred nine two zero four D. Uh, that the sum of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars be and hereby appropriated for the expansion and improvements to the Evergreen Cemetery. Uh, Mayor Dumas agreed to submit a transfer from FY twenty twenty-five free cash, uh, when certified, to fund the Evergreen Cemetery expansion and rescind the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar bond. On a motion by Counsel Oram, seconded by the chair, the committee voted to recommend approval of the bond under suspension of the rules. Uh, vote carried four to zero. Uh, next item was, uh, order number twenty-four dash one hundred nine two zero four E. Uh, that the sum of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars be and hereby appropriated for improvements to municipal buildings and, and boilers. Uh, this bond is for new, uh, high-efficiency boilers at the Walker Building. Uh, Mayor Dumas agreed to submit a transfer from the FY twenty twenty-five free cash, uh, when certified, to fund the Walker, uh, Building Boiler and rescind, uh, the one hundred and twenty thousand dollar bond. On a motion by Counsel Oram, seconded by the chair, uh, the committee voted to recommend approval of the bond under suspension of the rules. The vote carried, uh, four to zero. Uh, next up was order number twenty-four dash one hundred nine two zero four F. Uh, that the sum of three hundred thousand dollars be here, is hereby appropriated for the construction and our reconstruction of the pumping stations and the pumping station equipment. On a motion by Counsel Ficillo, seconded by the chair, the committee voted to recommend approval of the bond under suspension of the rules. Uh, vote carried four to zero. Uh, next up was order number twenty-four dash one hundred nine two zero four G. That the sum of two million dollars be and is hereby appropriated for water main construction and/or reconstruction. Uh, on a motion by Counsel Ficillo, seconded by the chair, the committee voted to recommend approval of the bond under suspension of the rules. The vote carried four to zero. Uh, next up was, uh, order number twenty-four dash one hundred nine one six zero. Communication from Mayor Dumas with the proposed ordinance amendment, amendments to City Code, chapter one twenty-five, Personnel Section Five, Preparation of Classification Descriptions, and to chapter one twenty-five, Personnel Section Six, Salary Schedule, uh, for a new and existing position in the FY twenty twenty-five municipal budget, uh, for the following positions. Capital Project Manager, DPW Commissioner, Assistant DPW Commissioner, City Engineer, and Assistant Library Director and Reference Librarian, part-time. Uh, Chair Irish began the review of the salary ordinances, starting with the changes proposed at the public library. Uh, the Library Director addressed the two positions at the library. Uh, the employee in the position of the Library Assistant Director has been in place for eight years. Uh, the Library Assistant Director ordinance is a forty hour, uh, per hour a week position with seven steps. Uh, minimum step one is eighty thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars. Uh, maximum step is, step seven is ninety thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars. On a motion by Counsel Oram, seconded by the chair, the committee voted to recommend approval of the ordinance to start at step one, eighty thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars, effective September first, twenty twenty-four. Uh, vote carried, uh, four to zero. Uh, the Library Director stated that there are three part-time, uh, Reference Librarians. One has been in place for three years, uh, one for a year and one half, and one for under a year. Uh, the Reference Librarian, uh, part-time is a seven-step, part-time position, um, with an hourly rate, a minimum step of one, twenty-five dollars per hour. Uh, maximum step is seven, which is at twenty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents per hour. Uh, on a motion by Counsel Oram, seconded by the chair, the committee voted to recommend approval of the ordinance effective September first, uh, twenty twenty-four. With the starting step to commensurate with the employee's current step. Uh, vote carried, uh, four to zero. Uh, the committee continued review of the salary ordinances, uh, and the job descriptions for the DPW, discussing the changes with the interim Commissioner Ted Scott. Uh, all positions are forty hours per week with seven steps. After a lengthy discussion, the following votes were taken. Commissioner DPW, on a motion by Counsel Oram, seconded by the chair, uh, the committee voted to recommend approval of the ordinance effective September first, twenty twenty-four. Uh, starting at step one of the salary schedule at one hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. Uh, the vote carried four to zero. Next was the Assistant Commissioner of the DPW. Uh, on a motion by Counsel Ficillo, seconded by the chair, uh, the committee voted to recommend approval of the ordinance effective September first, twenty twenty-four, starting at step one of the salary schedule, uh, of a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. The vote carried four to zero. Uh, next was the City Engineer. On a motion by Counsel Ficillo, seconded by the chair, uh, the committee voted to recommend approval of the ordinance effective September first, twenty twenty-four, starting at step one of the salary schedule at a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. Vote carried four to zero. Uh, next was the Capital Projects Manager. Uh, on a motion by Counsel Oram, seconded by the chair, uh, the committee voted to recommend approval of the ordinance effective September first, twenty twenty-four, starting at step one of the salary schedule at a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, together with the classification description, which is the job description, uh, for the Capital Project Manager. The vote carried four to zero. Uh, President Osing, uh, recommended a suspension of the rules at the City Council July twenty, twenty-second, twenty twenty-four meeting, uh, to advertise the salary ordinances as amended this evening. Uh, Chair Irish polled the members, there were no objections. Uh, the chair will request suspension of the rules at the July twenty-second, uh, City Council meeting to request the ordinances be advertised as amended, uh, with the effective, uh, date of September first, twenty twenty-four. Next up was order number twenty-four dash one hundred nine one three one. Uh, communication from Mayor Dumas with a proposed ordinance- Communication from Mayor Dumas with the proposed ordinance amendments to the City Code Chapter 125, Personnel Section 5, Preparation of the Classification Descriptions, and to Chapter 125 Personnel, Section 6, Salary Schedule, relative to the position of the drop-off attendant and junior civil engineer with the Public Works Department. Interim Commissioner Scott addressed the salary ordinances, explaining the importance of both positions. The junior engineer position is highly critical overseeing inspections, oversight at construction projects, interfacing with residents, resulting in fewer residence calls when they are on-site. During the winter season, junior engineers work on in-house designs, saving the city thousands of dollars. Interim Commissioner Scott addressed the drop-off attendant position, explaining it is important to get qualified persons who will be good ambassadors for the city at the drop-off facility. There is only one full-time position at the current time, but he would like to have two full-time and two part-time people. He feels the higher rate is necessary to attract most qualified to represent the city. On a motion by Counselor Oram, seconded by the Chair, the committee voted to recommend approval of salary ordinances for the junior engineer and the drop-off attendant effective the date of City Council approval, together with the classification description, job description, for the junior civil engineer. The vote carried 4 to 0. Meeting adjourned at 8:21 PM, Mr. President, and that is the end of my report. And I will be asking for two suspensions this evening. The first suspension I'll be asking for this evening is to approve the capital bond request.
Motion made and seconded to approve the suspension for the seven bonds. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the suspension? Suspension carries 11-0. So Counselors, just to remind, as we get started, each bond takes its own vote. We'll discuss them, and then it's a roll call vote, eight votes to approve the bond. So, Mr. Chairman, start making motions.
Motion, motion, move the recommendation of committee to approve the $6 million for the street construction bond.
Motion made and seconded to approve the $6 million street construction bond. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Counsel Landers?
Yes.
Counsel Vidal?
Yes.
Counsel Irish?
Yes.
Counsel Oram?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Roby?
Yes.
Counsel Preciado?
Yes.
Counsel Osing?
Yes.
Counsel Dusset?
Yes.
Counsel Navin?
Yes.
Levin Yeh, sir.
The $6 million street bond is approved by a vote of 11 in favor, 0 opposed.
Counsel Irish?
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of committee to approve the $500,000 landfill post-closure development bond.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the $500,000 landfill post-closure development bond. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Irish?
Yes.
Counsel Oram?
Yes.
Counsel Dusset?
Yes.
Counsel Ficillo?
Yes.
Counsel Landers?
Yes.
Counsel Navin?
Yes.
Counsel Preciado?
Yes.
Counsel Vidal?
Yes.
Counsel Roby?
Yes.
Counsel Osing?
Yes.
Levin Yeh, sir.
The $500,000 landfill bond is approved by a vote of 11 in favor, 0 opposed.
Counsel Irish?
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve the $1 million recreational facilities bond.
Counsel Preciado?
Yeah, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to postpone this bond until August 19th, regular meeting.
There's been a motion to postpone this bond till August 19th. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those, do you want to discuss? You're good?
I would like to discuss it. One of my... So, my main reason is this is going to allow us sufficient time to gather more information, more input from our constituents, especially in that neighborhood. I have already spoken to some of them. I've spoken to neighbors. I've spoken to people online through emails. And I've actually met with people at Ward Park, and the vast majority are not in favor of this change. I think it's, we owe it to the community to have some kind of discussion. This is kind of a big change for that neighborhood, and this is a lot of money for that. So I'd like to have that discussion with the mayor, the DPW, the Rec Department, and, you know, see what we can do for our constituents and hopefully keep that giant asset, you know, in the city. If not, replace it with something, a better pool, you know, something nice.
On the motion to postpone to August 19th meeting, all those in favor of the postponement? Opposed. It is postponed to August 19th. Counsel Irish?
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of committee to approve the 120... Sorry. Motion to move the recommendation of committee to approve the $350,000 cemetery bond. Cemetery bond, please.
Motion made and seconded to approve the $350,000 cemetery bond. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Counsel Irish?
Yes.
Counsel Vidal?
Yes.
Counsel Navin?
Yes.
Counsel Dusset?
Yes.
Counsel Osing?
Yes.
Counsel Preciado?
Yes.
Counsel Roby?
Yes.
Counsel Oram?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Landers?
Yes.
Counsel Ficillo?
Yes.
Levin Yeh, sir.
The $350,000 Evergreen Cemetery bond is approved by a vote of 11 in favor, 0 opposed.
Counsel Irish?
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of committee to approve the $120,000 municipal buildings bond, please.
Motion made and seconded to approve a $120,000 municipal bond for the Walker Building. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Counsel Vidal?
Yes.
Counsel Landers?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Dusset?
Yes.
Counsel Navin?
Yes.
Counsel Ficillo?
Yes.
Counsel Irish?
Yes.
Counsel Roby?
Yes.
Counsel Osing?
Yes.
Counsel Oram?
Yes.
Counsel Preciado?
Yes.
Levin Yeh, sir.
The $120,000 bond for the municipal building bond is approved by a vote of 11-0.
Counsel Irish?
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of committee to approve the $300,000 pumping stations bond, please.
Motion made and seconded to approve the $300,000 pumping station bond. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Counsel Preciado? Counsel Ficillo?
Yes.
Counsel Irish?
Yes.
Counsel Vidal?
Yes.
Counsel Landers?
Yes.
Counsel Oram?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Navin?
Yes.
Counsel Osing?
Yes.
Counsel Dusset?
Yes.
Counsel Roby?
Yes.
Levin Yeh, sir.
The $300,000 pumping station bond is approved by a vote of 11 in favor, 0 opposed.
Counsel Irish?
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of committee to approve the $2 million water main bond, please.
Motion made and seconded to approve the $2 million water main bond. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Counsel Ficillo?
Yes.
Counsel Dusset?
Yes.
Counsel Landers?
Yes.
Counsel Oram?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Irish?
Yes.
Counsel Roby?
Yes.
Counsel Osing?
Yes.
Counsel Vidal?
Yes.
Counsel Preciado?
Yes.
Counsel Navin?
Yes.
Levin Yeh, sir.
The $2 million water main bond is approved by a vote of 11 in favor, 0 opposed.
Counsel Irish?
Thank you, Mr. President. Next, I would like to ask for a suspension this evening to request the ordinances be advertised as amended with the effective date of September 1st, 2024, please.
There's been a motion for suspension of the rules. All those in favor of the suspension? Opposed. Suspension carries 11-0. Counsel Irish?
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of committee to advertise as amended with an effective date of September 1st, 2024, and this first one is for the Library Director.
If you want to take, you can take all of them at the same time.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will take absolutely, that would include the Library Director. That would include the Reference Librarian part-time. And that would include the Commissioner DPW, Assistant Commissioner DPW, City Engineer, and the Capitals Project Manager, please.
So motion made and seconded to approve the amended advertisement for the Capital Projects Manager, the DPW Commissioner, the Assistant DPW Commissioner, the City Engineer, the Assistant Library Director, and the Reference Librarian part-time. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. So all in favor? Opposed. So the amended salary ordinance advertisement is approved by a vote of 11 in favor, 0 opposed. You're good? Any other reports of committees? Seeing none. Agenda item number 31.
Ordered that the City Council investigate the feasibility for implementation of automated traffic enforcement technology such as speed cameras and red light cameras to enforce red light running and speeding violations within the city of Marlboro, submitted by Counsel Ficillo.
Counsel Ficillo?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a constituent-driven order to address a number of traffic safety concerns that I have taken in over the last six months as the Ward 6 City Councilor. I believe this is the first step in a broader conversation about traffic safety in the city. And with that, I move to refer to the Public Safety Committee.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the Public Safety Committee. Any discussion on the motion? Counsel Roby?
Thank you, Mr. President. While I certainly understand the concerns, the language of the order also concerns me where it is to investigate the feasibility of automated traffic enforcement technology. In looking up some information on this, existing master general law, Chapter 90(c), defines the mechanism for writing and processing tickets for moving vehicle violations. Where a police officer in a community sees someone doing that moving violation can stop them and issue a ticket. Having a camera take a picture of a plate does not provide a positive identification of the motorist, and there is nothing in master general law to allow anyone in the state to take a picture and then give a moving violation. Passed bills in the Senate and the House to allow automated enforcement of moving violations have failed, including one authorizing the city of Somerville to employ automated enforcement of speed limit violations in designated safety zones. In the current legislature, there are two bills. House 3393, an act relative to automated enforcement, was sent to study on June 6th. And Senate 1483, an act for an equitable 10-community pilot program to improve traffic safety, was sent to study in May of 2024. While I applaud my fellow counselor for his passion on this matter, until there's something on the books at the state level, I don't believe it is wise use of our time to investigate the feasibility of implementing automatic traffic enforcement technology. And I would ask that this not be referred to committee until there's something we can really discuss. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Counsel Ficillo?
Thank you, Mr. President. A lot of that same homework I've done over the last few weeks, and the counselor is correct. This has been brought to the State House on a number of occasions, both in the Senate and in the House. It has been a bipartisan effort, I should mind you. There are Republicans and Democrats at the State House who have been vying for automated traffic enforcement for parts of the last decade. I talked to Senator Brownsberger up in Belmont. He's filed the same legislation every legislative session for about the last 15 years. So people are not short of trying this. And from the conversations I've had with people in Somerville, people in Cambridge, people in Salem, communities that have tried to, I don't want to say bypass, but work aside from what state law may say, they have done that through home rule petition, and I think that would be the same case for us. The single reason why these home rule petitions are failing is because the State House thinks this is an issue only in Boston. They think that traffic is not a concern. In Worcester County, Middlesex County, they are not having conversations outside of the city of Boston and greater Boston. And I really think it's paramount that we at least get the ball moving. If it is that we don't want this, that's fine, but I think that we should have a conversation in committee about it, at least, to see what, see what we can stir up. Maybe Marlboro is the thing that's going to be the juggernaut to get this moving on Beacon Hill. I know that the senators and the reps and some city councils and other communities that I've spoken with really do think that Marlboro could be what kind of breaks the camel's back here and gets people moving up on Beacon Hill. So I think it's a worthwhile endeavor. If the council doesn't think so, that's fine. But I would stick to that motion to send it to Public Safety.
Any other discussion on the motion? Counsel Dusset?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I have heard many earfuls of Public Safety as far as traffic speed and all that goes. It is a gray area as far as legal goes, and I understand that as well. But I think if we ignore the issue, they don't know how bad it is. So I appreciate Counsel Ficillo's work in trying to get something like this going. If the conversation is nothing more than a word or letter to the State House, then so be it. At least it's another one to say, hey, we don't like this. We want to be able to get a better handle on this. So there's lots of legal ramifications as far as photographs go, but thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Dusset. Anyone else? On the motion to... Counsel Preciado?
Sorry, yeah. So I do have some recollection of reports done from red light cameras around the country, and for the most part, I don't think they're very effective in, you know, stopping any violations. They've already occurred. But, you know, I, you know, I, you know, thank you for taking the safety of the citizens. And, you know, like Counsel Dusset said, if, if, you know, it helps, it helps. But I don't really think it will, considering the reports I've seen already.
Thank you, Counsel Preciado. Anyone else? Counsel Oram?
I'm glad to see my city council is working on this. And just so you know, they've been very active in my side of the ward, so I'm glad to see the police department out. But in speaking with the chief on many issues that the police department deals with, they're short-staffed. That's the main issue. And we need to start looking at their budget to make sure they have enough traffic enforcement, to make sure those eyes are on vehicles within our city, to make sure our streets are safe. I commend you for what you're doing. I think it should go to Public Safety for review, and maybe that discussion will come up with the police chief. That's my comments on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Oram. Anyone else? On the most, oh, Counsel Vidal?
I'm very excited about someone talking about public safety, since I chaired the Public Safety Committee. I welcome the discussion, and I support Counsel Ficillo.
Thank you, Counsel. Thank you, Counsel Vidal. Anyone else? On the motion to refer to public safety, all those in favor? 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, in favor, opposed? 1, 2, it is going to Public Safety by a vote of 9 to 2. Agenda item number 32.
Order Number 24-109132, proposed acceptance of deed in lieu of foreclosure concerning parcels of land located off Moser Lane. Recommendation of Legislative and Legal Affairs Committee is to approve.
Counsel Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move the recommendation of the committee to approve, please.
Motion made and seconded move the recommendation of the committee, which is to approve. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed. It is approved, 11-0. Agenda item 33.
Order Number 24-109133, proposed acceptance of easement for a small portion of land at the corner of Hayes Memorial Drive in Boston Post Road West from the property owners at 1,000 Nickerson Road for a Welcome to Marlboro sign. Oh, recommendation of Legislative and Legal Affairs Committee, I'm sorry, is to approve.
Counsel Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move the recommendation of the committee to approve, please.
Motion made and seconded to approve the recommendation of the committee. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed. It is approved, 11-0. Agenda item 34.
Order Number 24-109172, appointment of Mary Lou Vanzini to the Council on Aging for a term of four years to expire May 1st, 2028. Recommendation of the Personnel Committee is to approve.
Counsel Navin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of committee, which is to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve the appointment. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed. It is approved, 11-0. Agenda item number 35.
Order Number 24-109190, the appointment of MJ Spigonis, City Collector, Assistant Director of Finance, for a two-year term effective the date of City Council confirmation. Recommendation of the Personnel Committee is to approve.
Counsel Navin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of committee to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve the recommendation of the Personnel Committee, which is to approve the appointment. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed. It is approved, 11-0. MJ, congratulations. Well done. Agenda item 36.
Order Number 24-109157, the appointment of Christine Purple as Human Resources Director for a term to expire three years from date of City Council confirmation. Recommendation of the Personnel Committee is to approve.
Counsel Navin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of the committee, which is to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve the recommendation of the committee. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed. It is approved, 10-1. Let the record reflect Counsel Osing was in opposition, but it is approved, 10 to 1. Agenda item number 37.
Order Number 24-109136, proposed zoning ordinance amendment to Chapter 650 zoning relative to updating provisions regarding medical and adult-use marijuana. Recommendation of the Urban Affairs Committee is to approve.
Counsel Roby?
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of committee, which is to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve the recommendation of the committee, which is to approve the zoning change. Any discussion on the motion? Counsel Preciado?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to remove Amendment M from the ordinance. That essentially removes the hours from the ordinance. I think ultimately, the decision's still up to the City Council to set those hours by special permit. And I think, you know, that by doing this, businesses can take advantage of those extended...